With a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Who's applying in the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. First topic of discussion is benefits. Jenny?
Gary with the AIM Medical Trust and Gary with the Henryott Group were here this evening.
So we have two Garrys.
Gary and Gary, representing AIM Medical Trust.
And neither one's from Gary, Indiana.
No, but we've both been to Gary. That's why I'm not in the trust and that gets really confusing.
I grew up there, so be careful.
They're thrown away in there.
Not how you would like for us to that to perceive, but we can be as flexible as you'd like. So maybe we start off with a little bit of an overview of the trust and what it is. And then I know you've got a list of questions and we can take some time and kind of walk through those questions. I know Jenny has done some work and if there's an analogy or a mark, someone's done some work to kind of show what's happening premium wise and where that history's been. And with me is Gary Henryott and Gary's going to, he's been with the trust since day one. I'm Gary Malone. I've been on the board of the AIM Medical Trust since day one too. I've been a partner with Humble and Associates for 20 some years. I was managing partner of the firm when I retired. I was on this board and I stepped off this board to kind of help as a director. So I've had a lot of experience with the trust over the years. But my background is not insurance. It's actually I'm a CPA. I'm a retired CPA. So I've always been tired, but now I'm retired. So. Well, AIM Medical Trust is really kind of a unique approach to healthcare. It's not unique. It's unique to Indiana, but it's not unique to the United States. There are about nine municipal healthcare risk pools throughout the country. There's a couple in Washington, Oregon, Texas, Florida, Georgia, North Carolina, Rhode Island, just to name some of them. And then there are other types of risk sharing pools as well. But the concept is rather than each individual city going out on its own and bearing the risk associated with health insurance, the thought is we would all bind together and share that risk. And so that means in some years, each city will be helping another city that may have very high claims. In other years, you'll have high claims and this could be one of those years where other cities will step in and help you with those claims as well. But it's kind of like being self insured with 49 other cities and towns throughout the state. So it's a very unique approach to acquiring healthcare. So with that, why don't we talk a little bit about some of the questions that you have? And I think we can weave in some of the other history and attributes of the trust as we kind of go through these questions. So.
We do have some handouts. We haven't really heard anything formally, but we have had this list of questions that I think Greg put together. So is that okay to begin with that?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So we can address those and just kind of go in order. And one of the questions was you've been, first of all, we've been with the medical trust and I think 2011. You were one of the second tiers of folks coming in. We started in 2010 and Danville was an early adopter of this program, jumped in at the early, one of the top, the first five or six cities and towns that were in, joined the trust. So we appreciate Danville for that purpose. You've been a great members. Jenny's on the board, trustees. And so she's maybe a little bit biased about what we do. I hope she is anyway. Right now we have 50 cities and towns in the trust and it's growing. We've added in this year, 2021, we've added, I think, four more cities and towns to join the trust. So it's growing in five or six cities or towns growing the trust every year. We have about 4,500 employees covered by the program and about 10,000 noses. Some people say belly buttons, but I say noses. It sounds better. So we have about 10,000 members covered by the trust, which is employees, dependents, kids, those types of things. So one of the first question, I just want to give you a little of that background. And what you right now have two plans, but only one plan is really heavily used. That's your high deductible health plan. We also have a PPO option that you have, but only has, I think, one member in it right now. Is that correct, Jenny? So it really is the PPO plan, which is a traditional type of coverage is really unused. The high deductible health plan we have is the richest embedded high deductible health plan you can have. So it's a very good benefit and I can describe what that is. But I'm going to pass out to you. The question was, do you have other options? Sure. And we have 13. You're choosing two of those programs right now, but we have actually, we have 13 programs or plans that you can choose from. And we're coming up upon open enrollment, which is coming up in the fall of the year. So Jenny has probably already scheduled the open enrollment times in October, November, but open enrollment's coming up. And so if the town, if Danville would like to make a change on the plans you're offering, the plan options you're offering, you're certainly welcome to do that. Typically, most cities and towns have two plan offerings. We have a couple that have three. So if you want to add a third plan, I think we can certainly accommodate that administratively, just so you know that. So the question is, are there other deductible options? The answer to that is yes. And we'll give you that plan sheet to look at those deductibles and other options. And if you want to get into that, we'd be happy to talk about that further. Greg, is that sufficient for the first question?
Yes, I'll review this, but I'm sure that it is.
I mean, the question was, are other optional deductibles available? So.
Correct. And my question there was just on typically with insurance, you know, the higher the deductible, the cheaper the plan.
Absolutely.
You know, so I just wanted to make sure to see what other options were available on that.
And let's talk about that for a second because you have Danville with what we call Plan Seven. That's the richest plan design that we have with a high deductible health plan. So if you look into the column of Plan Seven, they're cleverly numbered one through 13, and this is number seven. If you look at that plan, it's a 28, it's a high deductible health plan. Therefore, it's coupled with a health savings account that you guys make contributions toward the members' health savings and accounts also. The deductible's $2,800 for any one individual. So if you have an employee who reaches $2,800, once they reach that deductible, once they pay that expense, it's 100% coverage for everything for the rest of the year. We're talking about in-network benefits. We have out-of-network benefits also, but we use United Healthcare as our network provider. It's the broadest network in Indiana. It's every hospital in Indiana. It's actually broader than the Anthem Network. So it's very broad. So a $2,800 deductible for an individual, once that's reached, you have 100% coverage. And for an individual plus one, it's a $5,600 deductible. But let's say we have a family, let's say we have a family of four, okay, and only one person has claims. The family doesn't have to reach the $5,600 deductible. Only one person has to reach the $2,800 deductible. That's 100% coverage for that person for the rest of the year. It's called an embedded deductible program. Does that make sense? If it doesn't, it's okay. You can ask questions. Okay. I'm going to move on, if you don't mind. What are the levels of service? And I'm not sure that Greg, we actually understood this or understand this, but what are the levels of service does the trust offer? So I have another, and you want to speak to that for a second? I have another handout.
Good. Red rather handout. I just wanted to mention that this is a program that is a employee, that's a benefit of AIM. And so it's part of your member benefits and there's no compensation that goes to the trust for this. This is a member-based service. I think that's kind of an important point to note too. The services that are provided at Danville are generally the same services that are available to all of our members. So in addition to the healthcare, dental, vision, short and long-term liability, disability, and the life insurance programs, there's also assistance as wellness programs. As you know, we provide wellness credits. So it's $30 per employee per year that can assist you with your wellness efforts. The board just authorized a $50 incentive for employees to receive the vaccine. So that's an employee benefit. That's a benefit that's part of trust. The trust, you have access to our lawyer for legal issues related to employee benefits. Jim Hamilton with Bose McKinney, that's embedded. That's part of that. That's included in that as well.
Yeah. So there's a handout here. But this is just a segment. These things. Everything is incorporated. Conditional fee. For example, ACA reporting. Those are all things that are your responsibility. Also, it's your responsibility.
One other service too that we admitted, we have invested in a data warehouse with Springbok. And so that'll give us some analytical data about the town, where your health claims are coming from and give us some better information to better manage claims here within the city, within the town.
So Greg, that was number two. We'll go quicker than that because we have several questions. So you wanted to know about what's the factor for the town of Danville? Has it changed over time since you've had coverage with us? Can you explain real quickly what you mean by that?
Yeah. So my inner conversation with clerk treasurer was that every year, the town of Danville gets assigned a factor based upon claims and what you have. So my question is, you know, what current factor is the town of Danville being assessed at? And how has that factor changed over, you know, the past five years?
Okay. This doesn't, Greg, answer that question. But it's close.
Okay.
First of all, there's no factor. Danville's not assigned a factor. Danville, what we do with every city or town in the trust as a whole, we look at Danville's claims every year. So we project, every year, we're projecting what Danville's claims are. And then we're determining Danville's rate structure based upon what one of the factors that goes into that rate structure is based upon Danville's claims. Are you having better claim experience than we anticipated? Are you having worse claim experience? Interestingly enough, Danville's had until this year, has had wonderful claims experience. This year, your claims experience is not good. So your claims right now are significantly higher than they have been. And as you know, a lot of times catastrophic claims, one or two or three or four of those claims, it can't really add up quickly. They can add up very quickly. I think we have one claim that's going to be estimated to be over a million dollars. So it doesn't take long to have a bad claims loss ratio. So what we try to do with the rate setting, which is actually down here, we've given you the rate history that you've had in the trust. And you can see actually in 2021, well, you can, so let me explain this chart if I could real quickly. So the teal blue line is what we call medical trend. Now, one of the things, we can argue about medical trend all day long, but one of the things about medical trend, it's significant. Medical costs are increasing every year. You know that. And United Healthcare, which is our carrier, has medical trend, medical and RX trend. Medical trend's about 9%. RX trend is about 13%. The average trend that United Healthcare anticipates of claims this year versus claims to be paid next year is they'll be inflated by 10.5%, 10.5% more expensive. Now, we think that's high, but that's a conservative estimate of what we call claims trend. The blue line shows you the United Healthcare trend that we've been. The gray line shown here shows you the actual, what we call targeted trust increase. So for example, if the trust as a whole needs a 5% increase, that's the corpus of everybody. But if Danville's having a really good year in this, you may give it a 3%. If Danville's having a really bad year, you can give it a 7%. The average, the target increase. So the trustees, what this guy represented, what he used to represent as a trust, they've set the parameter. It's the whole idea of the medical trust. So we don't want you to have a 20%. That's why the hack, we pull things together.
So if I may inject for a quick second. So as the trust brings on new towns and cities, does that lower the overall cost to all members?
It does two things. First of all, it lowers the per capita administrative cost, okay? Because administrative cost doesn't, if you're adding 100 people, the administrative cost doesn't change. Really, in general. So the more bodies we add, Greg, the less the per capita cost to the program. That's better. But that's a good thing. That thing is good. But the great thing is the larger the pool becomes, the more actuarially stable it is, the more predictable, the less volatility we have. So that's why we're trying to grow the trust. The larger the group is, the more actuarially stable. Danville should be encouraging us to add new members to what we call the.
There's actually a third element to that leverage. Right now, we have over 4,000 employees that are part of it. The buying power of those 4,000 employees ranks as the second largest city. We actually have better plans. We can do.
So to get back to this chart, the orange line is your experience. Over the last several years, 3,000. You've not performed, you've not performed before. Your rates have been lower than the 20%. You can't break this. Be law. You know, which I think. Both as many. We need to make sure. So last year, actually. Four-year period. Therefore, that. You're being all the way. Renewal this year. Increase. Daniel was paying that. Right. I think there's some other things in here also. Let's go. The cumulative renewal talks about if you. Look at these charts.
One other quick point on renewals and rates. If you recall, we didn't pay a premium in January. We had what's called a premium holiday. Well, the reason we did that is because our reserves were adequate to do that. And actually, the claims the last few couple of year has actually, for most folks and most companies around the United States have been going down because of COVID, because of people deferring elective procedures. So claims have actually gone down. So that surplus that we had received, that was returned back to you. Doesn't go to shareholders. It goes right back to you because you own the trust. And that's another value of being in this type of a program.
And if I may come back to this chart here, as the town would move up and down in these plans, is there a, I mean, if we're in Plan Seven, you know, and we have a X percentage or dollar amount cost for that, does it migrate up, sorry, up or down a percentage? Or will we get some additional information on this to tell us what those are?
They're going to get that same document.
And we'll have a premium for all 13. Thank you.
Probably should have said that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you.
So over the long term, the chief of, for the town of Danville, you talk about wages, increasing wages. We're really mixing apples and oranges here. Wages are, if you increase wages by whatever percent, that's a percentage of your total wage load, right? Your insurance premium is, the wage load, your insurance premium is this much. So if you have a 3% increase in your medical load, that doesn't translate to a 3% increase in overall compensation, obviously. So I really, we can't, we really can't balance that for you as to whether one's wiser than the other in the long-term strategy. What we're trying to do at the end of the day is provide stability of your medical costs so you can afford to get people raises. That's, so we don't have those 20% increases or 30% increases that suck the air out of the wage calculation. You don't have to worry about what that, what the AIM Medical Trust. So therefore, it's predictable and therefore you can really look at wages as an independent issue. Obviously, you have to factor in what the insurance cost is, but those are, that's important. Those are important things to talk about.
From a budget perspective, they're equally as important. You have to take both into consideration and every town will come to a different conclusion. You have to side with those.
Thank you. Okay. Can you give me some ideas about how to lower health insurance costs by 10%? So the easiest way, the most obvious way is to choose different plan designs, right? Because there's going to be a pretty good variability of cost of those plan designs. So as you go from Plan Seven to Plan Eight to Plan Nine to Plan 10, there's going to be significant changes in those premium costs because the benefits are less rich. The richer the benefit, the more the cost is. That's the actual way those things are calculated. So one would be to change plan designs. Another would be, and by the way, when you change plan designs, if you go to a less rich plan design, you're transferring costs from the. It had to come from someplace.
Right.
So it's not pay for that.
Right.
So the other thing would be, the next thing also does the same thing. If you're paying this amount for each employee, you're paying this amount for employee plus family coverage, you can certainly do, you can adjust that and you can balance those things the way you like the balances. But those are your individual calls.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg, in the long term, this is game, set and match in the long term for you, is to improve the well-being of your employees. So you have a clinic. We have to do everything we can to try to keep, make, help employees to be good consumers of their insurance coverage so they know what they have, but to keep them well. So the demand for these, the demand for services, because it's all claims driven. If we're reducing, if we're improving our employee, if they have diabetics. Have diabetics, the diabetics we have. Or. Or also, only your costs. Those costs are. But there's no. In the whole scheme of every premium dollar you pay, 88 cents to pay. Overhead cost to the program, if you're on a fully insured basis. So we have a very lean and efficient way of delivering. You. You. What's the, is there any connection between healthcare costs and dental revision? And no. The healthcare pool is a self-insured pool. Mark knows this and Jenny knows this. From Danville's perspective, you're getting fully insured premium. But all of those fully insured premiums that all of our 50 million go into the pool, and that pool itself is actually self-insured. But the dental, vision, life insurance, all fully insured and negotiated for a larger group to have. Larger buy. So there is an indirect. For all those types of.
I don't know if it was in my list of questions or not, but then do you guys reinsure?
We certainly do. That was your question.
Okay. Thank you. I couldn't remember. Hadn't got quite down that far.
No, and let's talk, since you asked, talk about that. So in Indiana, this program, this program is called a multiple or welfare range. Because the insurance, part of the insurance. Because if this thing fails, who's responsible?
State of Indiana.
They want to make sure.
Exactly.
They want to make sure the thing then fails.
Yeah.
So one of the things. We buy reinsure. Or reinsure.
So that's your deductible, basically?
That's what I deduct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everything above that's reinsure.
Thank you.
United Healthcare's.
Excellent. Thank you.
No compensation. We talked about that before.
Okay.
We just do this because it's just a hell of a lot of fun. Right, Gary? Particularly what you do, yeah. The next question was.
That's why we're still in private practice.
The next question was, who's your competitors? And I kind of, slightly, I said to myself here, well, our competitors, everybody and nobody. And let me explain everybody. Everybody is, you can go out on your own. All sorts of options. Fully insured. Dental. Blue cross or. Healthcare insignia or PHP. You have all sorts of options. Go for that. Our competitors. Do business with. I mean, to manage our. They're looking for. As I say, there's no. Person. Or we need. Going together. Going that house. Somebody else out there. Oh, there's a. Somebody else. You only are considering. Or they're just. For our. We don't have any corporate. Or 100% focused. Have, therefore. Accelerate Indians. But it's. By those cities. Anything come up?
We know it all.
Okay. So your question was about health screenings and offering incentives. Employee incentives, I think that's the question. Lowering cost of the health program if they do these things. Before. Question is, well, if employee pays less. Right?
Correct.
Because employees, we're giving you a premium.
So in number nine, so by going through the health screening, essentially, even though the pool, the pie, doesn't increase or decrease in size because it's driven on a claims basis, the healthier the employee, healthier the family, the lower the claims.
Over time.
Over time.
Absolutely. So that's what I was going to say. You're giving people incentives to behave differently or to do things differently. For example, there are some cities, some cities and towns have what they call smoke per charge. They do is to say if you smoke, that's exactly.
Does the town of Danville engage in that activity?
We do not.
But not everybody does. That's a. What I'm saying is the issue is, to the day. is, to the day, who's their great long-term strategy, these things, I'm going to ask. So, once you address this, and this was the, this was the reserves issue, the claim paying ability, I want you to talk about that.
Well, Gary mentioned that we, we're required by the state of Indiana to have adequate reserves, so, we've taken a little different approach, it's called a capital approach to reserve, so we use Price, Warhouse, Coopers. They come in every couple of years, and they do an assessment of the trust, and they measure not just the exposure we have on claims, or runout, but also for business risk, too. And so through that analogy, they'll go through a statistical analysis and give us the probability if all these things happened at the same time, what is the probability that you'll be around tomorrow to, and still be in business? And, by following their advice, they're, they're telling us that we have enough reserves that we could experience two, 100- and 200-year events and be fine. So we have more than adequate reserves, and that's why when we have reserves that exceed that, we find ways to pass that back to members.
Let me say it in more layman's way, he's, he's an accountant, he loves that, he loves the statistics, won't it? We have, we have enough, we have enough cash on hand to take care of all of our obligations for over six months with no income. Pay all the claims you're incurring, no income, pay, you know, pay the round of the claims, whatever that may be, so, that's, that's the manifestation of the policies he's talking about, setting those, those limits, which is really important. Okay. Given other towns our size, you see, do you see the same ratio between single coverage employees and, and family? And again, I'm not sure about what this is, but, are you talking about the contributions between the families, or the, or the mix?
The, the mix of usage. We have, we have an extremely high usage of single coverage versus family.
Actually, you don't. That's why, so the answer to the question is no, your, your usage from what I, from I have looked at, I think, I'll, I'll look at it again, but it doesn't seem to be out of line with me, to me. So we have.
Out of line for Danville, or out of line compared to other cities our size? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, compared to the cities and towns, it really doesn't, it really didn't jump out at me. But that comes down to, on the dependent coverage, it's how affordable for people the dependent coverage is, right? So we have, we have cities and towns where the dependent coverage is, you're asking them for a very little amount, doesn't have a chart on top, all of terms, but we have others that don't pay much of a subsidy. But guess what? They're not going to get very much utilization of that. So it really, it's kind of an artificial thing, guys have to set a strategy, that's the result in people hitting out based upon this. Why don't I go ahead? This is actually, one, one, and, and, we, we, and some of the comparisons you must see in this, it talks about, us in the Indian market, employee, this is, this is now, this is a norm for the entire trust, for the entire trust. So this, this is an average, employee spouse, that gives you a follow amount.
So the, the measurement on the left-hand side is a, is a contribution from, as a percentage from the employee?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. We don't provide healthcare to anybody else, southern cities and towns, you have a satisfaction survey, and, that's a, really a pretty good question, and we don't, I know we've talked about that, doing that type of thing, but go ahead, you want to.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about doing a satisfaction survey, we've not done one at this point, but we do have Jared, who goes out and visits every one of our members twice a year, just to listen to their concerns, get suggestions and ideas, and how we can make, make the trust better and be responsive to all their needs. So that's kind of a roundabout way for a, for a, for a satisfaction survey. I think the best survey is the fact that, over the last 11 years, with 50 members, we've had three leave. So I think that in and of itself is a reflection of the satisfaction of the members of the trust.
Thank you, Gary. How many single-covered employees never filed a claim? Actually, Greg, good question again, but I don't have the answer to that. I do have the answer to this, though. That of all of the 10,000 members in the plan in 2020, knows is covered by the plan, 96 to 97% filed claims. Okay, so 2% to 3% filed no claims, and you can imagine that, I mean, you have some young employees that they wouldn't, they wouldn't go to the doctor and, if they had to. So they, they would take a medication. But 97, about 96.5% of our, of our folks that are covered by the, by the plan filed claims in 2020. So that doesn't give you a direct answer, but it gives you kind of an indication.
Can we go back to 12, please?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it, did I?
That's all right.
Top of the page here. Is it common for there to be a difference between employee pay levels, and for 10%, yours was 10% for singles and 25% for others, the answer is yes. And I think that goes back to, back to the chart that I handed out, compared to averages for the trust and for other employers, non, non, non-municipal employees, too, which is the blue line. But yeah, that's, that's fairly, fairly common. Everybody, everybody, all, the leadership of a community, Danville, let's talk about Danville, they have to determine from a vegetarian perspective what that strategy is. So some cities and towns, it used to be, years ago, that employees paid nothing. I mean, 20 years ago, it was, the, things were different then, but 20 years ago, a lot of times, employees paid nothing, they may have paid, paid a small amount for the dependent coverage, but it was really low. Over time, that's changed quite a bit. And as the markets change, as the commercial market has changed in general. So, so your, your contributions of 10% and 25% are not, are not out of the realm of reasonableness. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sure. You have a carve-out plan, and I think what you're talking about there is spousal carve-out. And the trust does not, because that's a local issue. The trust doesn't, doesn't tell you, you should do this or should not do that, that comes down to what you do. But if you're interested in that, we can help you, we can provide prototypes for you to look at, and, and spousal carve-out programs go from kind of a voluntary compliance perspective all the way to something that's actually audited, and, and, and more, and which, which much, much more strenuous requirements and accountability. So there, it just depends on what you want to do in the program. But, I would say, I would say probably 30% of our, of the 50 cities and towns have, have spousal carve-out programs. Not, not, that's about it, about 30, 35%. Do you have any savings for employee physicals or C D L. physicals? So the employee physical comes, we have in all these plans, regardless of any of those 13 plans you choose, all of those plan designs have, by, this is required by the A C A, have preventative benefits included. So United Healthcare, we follow United Healthcare's plan for preventative benefits. Every, every, the recommendation, which is, so, one of the, one of the issues that we look at, looking at things, as far as, as far as engagement of your employees, is how often are they taking care of you? So, on the C D L., what we do from an exam perspective is qualify for what's spelled as, so we don't offer the C D L. The other thing we've looked at, or we've talked about, actually, we haven't looked seriously at it, but we know that your firefighters also get exams every year. We didn't, we've looked at, because we've had people ask us, they haven't gone yet. We talked about the reinsurance. So your question was, are there types of insurance available, and you're talking about, again, we have the medical plan, we have the dental, we have vision, we have life insurance and disability coverage, short and long-term. Those are all benefit-related, we're not, we're prohibited by statute, by state statute of doing the property and casualty stuff. So no, we don't. We're one of the few states that can't do that. A lot of other states, there are 30 or, 30 or 35 state pool programs for property and casualty business.
The vast majority of state pools are for property and casualty.
But we can't do that, you're prohibited. Are you using administrator? The answer to that is yes. Our administrator is United Healthcare. So, this is a technical issue, but we have what is called, yes, we're using, we chose Now Gary mentioned, Gary mentioned something, right? United Healthcare, we get information, for example, about your, you sat down, officially when you sat down in 2020, darn late, isn't it? So we, we, every 15, 3 days, all claim information, vision, all those things are at a warehouse, immediate access. So we're, we have U H C doing their administration, looking into our data warehouse, we can, we can really, but eventually we'll be able to tell you, your counsel, this, this, you know, we'll be able to tell you that, all that data, we're making progress, ask the question, I think that's, that's an important issue. You have a contract with Danville, the town of Danville, we have, actually do have a contract, and, and when Danville joined the trust back in 2011, you signed, the administration, the council, I'm sure, signed a trust agreement. Trust agreement, had many things, but one of the main features of that trust agreement, Danville made a three-year, but once that three-year commitment's up, which has been way up, is you're on an annual program. So, you are, you do have, are, you do have a trust document, but it's, your obligation to us is on.
Thank you.
Gary, you want to add something?
Can you talk a little bit about that process, because sometimes we get questions, and it may be confusing. Our members have been very insistent that they want pricing and time to prepare your budget. And so that means we have to have all of our work done, and we have to have numbers, premiums to Jenny by the first of September, in order to include that in the budget process. So you kind of got to start working backwards. So if we have to have that work done by the first of September, it takes us a time to do the calculations, for the board to approve those calculations, we have to have time to get the data to make those calculations. And, and if you move that back, you'll figure out that we need to know who's in and who's out of the trust by April 30th. So you'll find in that trust agreement, a requirement that if you want to leave the trust, you have to provide notice by April 30th, is because we have to know who's in and who's out, because we'll have to take those claims out to make those calculations. So that's one thing, but, but the renewal is an annual renewal process. And I think the decision, do you want to use an approach where you're, where you're working with other cities and towns to manage the costs and have the economies of scale, or do you want to go on your own? That's basically the decision.
Greg, does that answer your question?
It, it does, and, and, since 2011, you know, we've had a complete new council, we have.
Yep.
New administration.
Yep.
And, and so I appreciate you going through this exercise, I really do, so.
Not a problem, that's exactly right.
Thank you.
You don't know what you don't know.
Right.
And you need to know what you.
Don't know.
You need to know what you want to know, right? Okay, so we answered, recent premium decrease, what's been your track record? I've given you the track record, so you have that.
Thank you.
You have it for the trust, and you have it also for Danville specifically. Are there different levels of premium for smokers and non-smokers? That's up to you, we, we don't have a dog in that hunt. We've talked about that. We have our own gym, are there additional discounts on the premiums that are used? So you're, you have a clinic, you have gym, you're doing a variety of things, those are all reflected in the day, if you have every employee, you'll have three times a week, you're losing weight, you're getting fed, at the end of the day, that's an investment for you, more present at work, but we don't offer, we don't, now, what Gary talked about earlier, wellness, we are offering wellness credits. If you want to use the wellness credit to offset those costs, something you can do.
That's $30 per employee per year, that, that can come back to the town to help pay for those programs. And that is a program that we're, we're looking at expanding, the board approved our budget for this coming year, and we're expanding that, that, that amount, so we're looking at ways to expand that program.
That's it.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate you coming out.
Well, we're happy to do this again. What, what, Mark, you want to add anything? Great job.
They're on the agenda at 7 o'clock, do you guys want them to stick around and answer any questions at 7? We weren't sure if all of you were going to be here, so we had them on the agenda.
I think we're okay. You guys?
I just was curious if there's any additional questions from, from the rest of the council, or?
I don't have any questions.
I think you're doing a great job.
I guess the only thought I had was, obviously, this is good, a good exercise to be more informed, you know, as we're thinking about making changes, and I don't, I'm not saying we want to go this direction, but if we were to increase our employees' deductibles by two, you know, two, you know, 100% or whatever, then that could be a real problem, because, you know, unless other towns are on board with that type of change, and that's going to, you know, backfire on us. But certainly important to look at these options and see if there is anything we can do to save the town money, taxpayers' money, and go forward that way.
As those, I'm sorry, so as those premiums come through, he's going to get, every one of those plans is open.
Plus a deductible.
Oh, yeah, no, I'll show you.
Right, right.
Just not being more readable for me.
Right, sure, yeah, yeah.
Sure, I, I don't, I just don't recall, last year, us going through a budget process, getting something similar to this, that would, that would have those premiums. Instead, we were, we were, you know, presented with the same thing as the previous year. So, you know, I'd like to take a look, much closer look at the different levels of care. You know, again, I'm going to maybe use one of your words, did you say that, that Plan 7 is your, is your royal plan, or Cadillac plan? I mean, what was your term?
Yes, Plan Number 7 is our, first of all, of all the plans, 14 plans, it's the most popular plan, also what we call the richest, high-decibel health plan, so it's the most expensive, it's the most, because you'll look at, if you look at the renewal rates, and you can, Jenny has those, because it's going to be 3.3% than they are this year.
Sure.
So if you look at those rates, whatever they, whatever we have, that's going to be 3.3%. That's what that plan's going to cost next year, all your employees' costs. The other, the other rates is going to come out, what Plan 8 looks like. You have to look at the out-of-pocket math. You have to look at the out-of-pocket match.
Oh, yeah?
And one of the things in the survey you did, the Hendrick County survey, is they chose, of all the, of all the. Government entities, they compared their, if they had three plans or two plans, they compared the least expensive plan. Well, your least expensive plan, very rich option. I mean, just so you know that. And the least expensive plan, many of the municipalities offer is a less expensive one. So they're comparing, it's, it's, it's an accurate comparison.
So the true cost is really the premium plus the out-of-pocket exposure. I mean, that's really the total cost.
And, and then, uh, I don't think you guys need to stick around tonight. I, I, again, I appreciate your guys' time to come in and, and visit with us, uh, this afternoon. You had, um, sorry, get my, my notes back out. Can you provide us maybe with, uh, some information on, on wellness credits? Don't have to necessarily answer it now, but if you could get some information to Jenny that she could get to us, I'd, I'd appreciate and like, take a look at that. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Hey Jenny, salary and wages.
So I provided in July the salary and wage spreadsheet, which should be in your binder. And I just wanted to see if you guys had any questions about that. Greg and I have been working on the police departments. I'm not going to have an answer till Tuesday or Wednesday next week on that. There's a couple of people on vacation this week, and so as soon as I, they are able to get back with me, I'll be able to answer your question on that. I wanted to see, though, if you guys had any additional questions.
The raises of the superintendents, the amount that we have in there. Where did that amount come from?
On which sheet are you talking about?
$5,000 for the superintendent.
Tom, that, uh, that was, that was one of my ideas. That's where, that's where it came from. It wasn't included in that. I mean, it was something for us to discuss and work on.
Never mind. I thought it was what you were working on. It is what you're working on.
It is what I'm working on.
Okay, disregard that.
Premature, so.
Yeah, I provided 1, 2, and 3%.
Yeah, no, okay, that's fine.
So the discussion, yeah, the discussion right now is just 1, 2, or 3, so, okay.
I also, um, do you guys have any questions, or do you want to? I also provided the, uh, medical plan premium rates for 20, 21, and 22. 22, of course, was estimated, and I'll get you an updated sheet now that we know that it's 3.3%. As soon as I get definite numbers from the A Medical Trust, I will provide those to you guys as well. And I provided the dental and optical plan information. And for the last several years, um, we have offered to the employees in the incentive program that if they receive so many points and participate in different activities, then they get a discount off of their premiums. And so that's what the 2021 wellness, um, credits are. Um, if you earn 65 points, then you receive, um, $480 annually off of your premiums, which comes out to $20 a pay. And then if you earned 85, you received $600 annually off of, of your premiums per pay. We plan to do, um, a very similar option in 2022.
Was that material provided to us today?
Um, last, it was in the packet that went out last Friday.
Yes.
Oh.
I was curious, so generally, we have a premium increase year to year, is that right? How's the 3.3% fair with previous years? You know, we didn't have one last year.
Right, last year we had a reduction. I would have to look, it's been right around, uh, 4 to 5%.
Okay.
We budget up to 8%.
So 3-3 is not too bad, then?
Right, right. I answered some questions that have been asked of me in the last couple of weeks in, in your packets as far as open positions and increases in personnel. These are, my recommendation is that we have another work study a week from tonight. There's not a council meeting that night, but.
The 18th?
Just to dive in, um, to personnel, since each department is asking for additional personnel. And then to look at each department's budget, um, overall. It may be Tuesday before I can get posted I can to on revenues and expenditures, but I'll get you guys as soon as I can. Honestly, be there. But that, that next council meeting, we have to make decisions. We have to start posting the budget in Gateway, and then that first meeting in October is the public hearing. So I didn't know in the next week what you guys want me to concentrate on, getting you information for, because really, we, we have two weeks to make decisions.
Kind of off-topic, but not really, just if, if, on the night of the 15th, if we're also going to have a work study, I've got on my calendar, there's a joint board meeting that night.
There is, but the joint board can meet. Patient, can't they, Rob? The EMS joint board could meet in my conference room, or?
I guess, because it'd be nice if, if, you know, if we had any last-minute things we needed to go over before the meeting that night.
Oh, and that work study that night?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have one scheduled every council meeting anyway, but.
We could move that one up to 6 o'clock if you guys would like. I can't remember, are they set at 6:30 right now? We've been meeting early. I can't remember.
Is it possible for us to change next week's, um, work study from the 8th to the 7th?
Sounds like that would be challenging for. I'm available the 7th, 8th, or the 9th.
Nancy, are you available on the 7th?
I have a conflict, um, on the 7th. I could see if I can get it rescheduled.
We won't know from Chris till 7 o'clock.
What'd you say? I'm sorry?
Chris, Gerald, he won't be here till 7 o'clock.
Let's, uh, let's make that decision then, uh, in the council meeting.
I'm, I'm good on the 9th, we have an RDC meeting, but I'm. I will make the decision. For sure.
Jenny, I guess to answer your question, what should you focus on? I, I think that there's still some additional data that I know that you're working with the county and the state to finalize. Uh, those items need to be finalized. And, um, I also think that, um, again, I know you've provided us with, uh, premium information. You know, I think that, um, instead of us having to go through and hand calculate what 3%, 3.3% increase is, uh, if you could take care of that on the computer, you know, and, and then email these updated new documents, you know, to us on, on that. I think we still have, you're right, out, the outstanding issue with the, uh, um, police department that we're working through. I think that, um, maybe some of us, uh, on the council should, you know, talk amongst ourselves on maybe putting together, something more formal, you know, for, um, pay raises, you know, for us to narrow that down. Think, think most of us like some of the ideas being floated around, so, uh, not to put any words in your mouth. And then, uh, with this information about healthcare today, uh, for us, you know, as a council to have, uh, individual conversations about uh, what we'd like to see there as well.
Hopefully, we can get those premium. Premium soon.
The premium updates.
Yeah, premium updates, yeah, yeah.
And, um, yes, and I mean, if we could also get that comparison across all 13 plans, you know, what those are, because I, I think that would make a, make a difference as well. Mr. President, I have nothing further.
Jenny, you have any more?
I do not.
I have one item, Mr. President. I understand we are striking.
Correct.
Oh, there's seven, okay.
Apparently, we do. Look at that.
Lot of reading material here. We can read this by next meeting.
Uh, it's up to you. They will provide a presentation for us. 10 minutes.
Is this already translated to, uh, English?
Honestly, I opened the packages.
Yeah.
So I haven't read them yet. But, uh, I know our. Quest is that. To your.
Right. We're going to get a consultant to help us?
Yeah, um, I think, uh, our previous agent of record.
So Jenny, did you say we have to make decisions next week, uh, next meeting, or just give you a general direction on what we think?
Just the general direction.
Okay, okay.
However, we have to do it to get an insurance agent record. And put some numbers based on what we've done in years past.
Sure. Make a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Means adjourned till 7 o'clock.